We're back. How you doing? Welcome. This is Charles X. White, your host for Community Views and Solutions. We have a special edition and we are trying to make sure that we keep you informed, up to date on local, national, and just general information. Community Views and Solutions is a program that's designed to provide information and questions and answers if any of you feel like you can call in and ask our guests, ask me a question. Today, I wanted to recap a little bit on some of the things that you may or may not know about charity productions and some of the services we do offer and have offered from time to time in the city of Houston, Harris County. Today was a breakfast day, one of our quarterly breakfasts southeast, first one for the year 2020, hey, hey. And it was a very good and powerful exchange of information with the citizens. One item in particular, I want you to make note of it, and our theme for the day was "Help Somebody Today." Help Somebody Today. There's always a lot of conversation, but sometimes little things will help some people a whole lot. So one of the items we picked out was "Solid Waste and Heavy Trash." There's a form on the city website with solid waste and it's disability application. And just a brief about it, you can go to the city's website, Solid Waste, and find this particular service. This disability application, if you are living alone and have a disability and you have a doctor's signed off authorization, you, if you are living alone and elderly or have a medical handicap, the solid waste department will get your regular garbage, trash, and take it from the back to the front. If you have heavy trash on the front, the back, the side, whatever, they'll get the heavy trash and put it out on the street corner for pickup. And our challenge to the audience today was to, to come into our next meeting in May, next big meeting, is to bring back a testimony and a name of a person that they helped today. So we want to give that challenge to our viewing audience. And when we reconvene, I think on February the 13th, we'll be back on the show for you to call in if you helped somebody today by using that form, going to that form. And you can also access that form by calling 311. And they will send somebody out to inspect, to make sure everything is right. And there's a catch to it. And this particular catch is if you get the service and start the service, do not put your trash out at all, because that will discontinue the service. When you initiate the service, then you make sure you maintain the service by allowing the solid waste department to do it. If your nephew comes over, your son, your grandson, and they come over, don't let them put out the trash, because they will disconnect the service. So that was our challenge today to the audience, and that's our challenge to you in the viewing audience. It's a disability form on the solid waste department. Now, we're going to recap some national and then we'll get to some local politics. But I do want to introduce one of my guests for the night that's here, arrived, is a candidate, Maria T. Jackson. And she is running for Harris County Commissioner, Precinct One. And I want you to know that she is here and we are expecting one other guest. But matter of fact, let me just let her introduce herself before we go to the national and local, come back to the local politics. Commissioner, I mean...
You said it right. Speaking into existence.
Okay. Let the audience know who you are and a little bit about you, and then we'll come back to you so you can kind of give them a broader view and a succinct who you are and what you're running for and how you plan to succeed.
Okay. Well, first, thank you for having me on your show. I'm very honored. And my name's Maria T. Jackson. And before September 30th, I was the longest-serving felony court judge in Harris County. And I was the administrative judge over all the felony, the 22 felony courts here in Harris County. And I stepped down from the bench so I could step up and speak out for our community. I'm here to be a voice for the voiceless. There's a lot that needs to be done, especially in Harris County, for Precinct One. That's why I'm running for Harris County Commissioner, Precinct One.
Okay, well, that's pretty good. So let me talk a little bit about the political climate on the national level. And since you have been a judge and are a judge, and you have had 11-plus years of experience, you're an attorney as well?
Yes.
And since you have all of that knowledge and experience, do you see the president being impeached? I mean, he has been served, but the stage that they're in now, how do you see this playing out from what your political and legal background? I know it's constitutional debate and not a criminal and it's political, but just give the audience a sense of your view on that.
Well, it's interesting right now. I have been a judge for 16 years, so I've always had to remain unbiased. And I've not been permitted to give my opinion. Right now, what I see is going on is, what I would like to see is that justice is administered and that the Senate would allow the witnesses to come before the Senate to publicly testify so that the Americans can know what happened, what really happened, and bring out the evidence. But the way I see it right now, they're playing partisan politics. And when I say partisan politics, and "they," I'm meaning the United States Senate. It's, right now, is majority Republican. And at this state, nationally and both locally, we need to get away from party over the people.
Well, let me just go right into your race. How do you see your race going at this time? And what are some of the nuts and bolts, mainline issues that you see are a challenge for the community where you feel that you need to run for office? What are the challenges that you see?
Well, as I stated earlier, I was the administrative judge over the 22 felony courts. I just received a 30% raise because of my tenure. And I started looking around. And right now, the FBI statistics show that violent crime has risen. And this is because of the current commissioner, Ron Yellos', policies of bail reform. I agree that nobody, the majority of us, do not want to see nonviolent offenders locked up.
Right.
And so we're in agreement on that. However, as a former felony court judge, I presided over serious felony offenses, which included death penalty cases, aggravated sexual assault of a child, aggravated robbery of a deadly weapon. So with that, you can't just blanket, let every, release everyone.
You're telling me that this bail reform is just a blanket release?
It's a blanket release as it stands right now.
Wait, wait, let me ask you that again, because I don't know if people understand it to be like that. I don't know if it was presented like that. But you're saying blanket, release, bail reform, and no checks and balance for serious levels versus non-serious level?
No, that's what they're saying now, because in retrospect and looking at the FBI statistics showing that violent crime has risen, especially in the minority communities, that's where, that's where the predators go, into the minority communities. So I'll give you an example. This current commissioner did call judges, felony court judges, and say, "Release defendants on pretrial bond, or I'm going to find somebody to run against you." And then threatened to sue, and then filed a suit. But the plaintiffs haven't been able to sue the felony court judges, because they realize that when you get to the felony level, it's more complicated than misdemeanors. And so I'll give you an example. There was a judge who released a defendant on two aggravated robbery cases with a deadly weapon on pretrial bonds. And while he was out on pretrial bond, he committed three more aggravated robberies with a deadly weapon. And then, when he was fleeing from the police, he shot at an innocent bystander in his car with his two kids in the car. So by the grace of God, they weren't killed. And I have an example of a case where a man, now this was before the pretrial bonds were forced on the judges. But there was a man who was arrested and charged with giving his 24-month-old HIV herpes, his 24-month-old niece HIV herpes and gonorrhea. And while he was out on bond, he continued to pick up little girls at bus stops. They were 13-year-old girls who thought he was cute. He was a 36-year-old man, and he spread the virus to about 15 other young women. So my point in letting you know this is that there really are some dangerous criminals out there.
And they get out.
And when they get out on pretrial bond, a lot of them reoffend. And so when you're instituting bail reform, I believe that you shouldn't do it if you've never practiced criminal law. You should engage not only the community, you, and the community, the law enforcement agencies, the DA, the defense attorney, the judges, and like I said, all of the stakeholders. Because you, as the community, you know what you need in the criminal justice reform. And I'm about bringing people together. I believe that a real leader brings people together and we discuss and see how can we solve problems. So that's not what's happening with the current bail reform. Additionally, the bail reform contained giving Uber, paying $97 million, that the taxpayers are going to bear the burden, $97 million to give Uber rides, cell phones, and childcare to defendants, but nothing for the victims.
Wait a minute. Is this a state, county?
This is county. This is county. This is what the current commissioner had been pushing.
And now it's a reality.
They've kind of pulled it back, because now they're getting a lot of pushback. When the public knows, this is what I'm doing, I'm here to educate you. I get to see, I got to see, being an administrative judge, dealing with county business and representing the 22 felony courts, I was able to see things that the community might not see. And so I'm here to help educate you, and I would love for the voters to really educate yourselves. And...
How would the voter go about doing that? I don't remember, and I'm not saying that it did not happen, so let me, let me pull that back. I wonder how many public sessions with subject matter experts did the commissioner have and hold in this process of making this a county-wide accepted practice? Are you familiar with any public meetings with subject matter experts that were held or what?
Not with the subject matter experts. And that's what, to me, is the biggest flaw.
Well, let me explain this right quick to the audience. There's no question that the black community has been led astray, underserved, underutilized as it relates to a solution-oriented possibility. We all need people with more knowledge to explain to us what are the nuances. In this matter, you would be considered to be a subject matter expert?
Yes.
And you're telling us right now, from your professional expert experience, that this is not healthy?
This is not healthy, and the judges were not asked...
The judges were not included?
The judges were not included, the law enforcement officers were not included. The DA was at first included, but when she started seeing people getting killed and that it was going the opposite direction of what they anticipated, then she didn't agree with it, because it's about public safety right now.
Right.
We deserve to be safe in our community.
Well, what would drive the commissioner to do that? Is it a financial, outsourced or component to this? I mean, can he be, the man that put together the tax-free weekend, now is putting together something that's a possible hurt, harm, and danger to the public? I mean, I'm not, I'm not getting...
It's, it's really interesting that you would say that. Looking at his past finances, you know, Union Pacific?
We're in a deal with them now with the carcinogens, Creosote and...
The cancer cluster.
Right, the cancer, right.
Yes. It is documented that between 2000 to 2015, Ron Yellos received $17,500 from this company, Union Pacific. And it's also, we have that, since he's been in public office for 36 years, he has received through his investment firm or any other firms, Apex Securities and any other firms that he's had dealings with, dealings with, $50 billion in bonds. The Houston Chronicle did a story about that in 2016. So this is another reason that led me to run for Harris County Commissioner, Precinct One. I believe that it's time for people to step up and be public servants. It's time for the community to elect real public servants and not career politicians.
Well, let me say something, because you said a whole lot in that little statement you just made. So are you suggesting, or does the evidence lead you to surmise that those investments or investments that you, benefits that you are speaking of had something to do with poor judgment? Does it demonstrate poor judgment? And you're using that as a way to indicate that this bail reform is, is poor judgment?
I don't even know if I would say that is, I would say that, yes, on the surface, it is poor judgment, but in reality, it's profits for this current commissioner, it's been profits over people for over 36 years. And I, this is some of the reasons that led me to run. And I've visited Northwood Manor. And that community is a very nice community, but they have been...
Neglected?
Neglected. And there was an 80-year-old couple that had a porta potty in their backyard since Hurricane Harvey.
Outhouse.
Yes.
And right now in Houston, we got outhouses due to...
Hurricane Harvey, which happened almost three years ago. And Channel 26 News did a story on them, and they actually helped them so they don't have the porta potty since last month. I walked the neighborhoods and saw how ditch P-125 has been neglected and has not been cleaned. There's been illegal dumping, and so the drainage is stocked up, which causes it to flood and causes the entire neighborhood to flood. It's been neglected.
One of the subject matter experts, one of the subject matter experts that attended that meeting we had at Christ Temple Church Tuesday, talked about how some of the contaminants and the debris that are in the ditches are, that's a, that's traffic.
Yes.
And it distributes the contaminants. What I want to do now is give the audience a sense of what happened at the breakfast this morning, and we have a clip. I see the number is up, 713-807-1794, and we're going to watch about an eight-minute clip, and we're going to come back. And if you have any questions or comments, let us know, call us, and we'll put you on. So Mark, do you have that clip ready from the breakfast today?
Yes, I do.
Let's run that.
Wow, wow, thank you. Good morning. I am pleased to be back again. In reality, I'm just a turnip bean farmer from North Louisiana. Thank you, Charles. Here today to support and introduce Kim Ah, Harris County District Attorney. She's the right person in the right position at the right time. This whole criminal justice reform movement across America, some aspects of it has dark components in it. Kim Ah is in fact implementing criminal justice reform measured with public safety, and that's the right thing to do. Criminal justice reform measured with public safety. That's the right way to do it. Most people know when it is right. Some people will acknowledge when it's right, but when it's wrong, all of us will suffer. It doesn't matter how dark the forest is, there's a path through it. So as we work our way through this criminal justice reform measure here in Harris County, Texas, Kim Ah had it right on bail reform, she had it right on diversion, she has it right on public safety, so let's get this right. Kim Ah for Harris County District Attorney. Come on up, Kim. Thank you. You know, I know a little bit about public safety. A lot of you I know are, some of you I've seen around, and some of you I've been involved with for years. And I'll say this, and I'm going to pass the microphone. Yes, absolutely. It's Charles White. We caught him over there. We got the rap sheet down there, but I want to say this. Many of you know me. I don't lend my name, my brand if it ain't right, okay? If it's not right. So when I stand and put my brand, my reputation, my legacy, how you've supported me, when the system had me down there, you know, y'all, they had me, right? The system had me down there, there were people in this room helping me every day. Send it to my representative Coleman, and those, many of you helped me, came down there. This person was there also, helping me, okay? When the system had me down. So I appreciate the fact that I'm here today to say that this is the right person, in the right position, at the right time, and I ask for your help, your support, Kim Ah, Harris County District Attorney. I'm CO Brad Bradford. I approve this message.
Ladies and gentlemen, the district attorney is the top law enforcement official in Harris County. We work with law enforcement every day, and yet we have a very different job. But the community is the key to public safety, and that's why my staff and I are here. Now, can you imagine the opportunity as district attorney to bring on a former chief of police and city councilman like Brad Bradford, joined by other experts? Vivian King, other members of my DA staff, please stand up. Vivian King, Councilmember Dwight Boykins, formerly Councilmember, these are folks helping me not just run our office. Councilmember Boykins' second chance program marries perfectly with our theory of public safety, which is just this, that we're safer when we keep people in the workforce, and when they're too dangerous, we're going to separate them from our community. We're going to do it with the community, we're going to do it fairly. So I'm here to talk to you right quick. Thank you all. You know, when you talk about diversity training, Charles? Mayor Parker, Brad Bradford, how are we here but for the work that the people who came before us did? So for everybody who broke down the barriers in our community, especially in law enforcement, for women, for minorities, for our communities, thank you. Judge, you were one of those forerunners as well. So on February 15th, can I have a flyer, Vivian? On February 15th, we are inviting you to tell your community about what we call "Make It Right." We reinvest drug forfeiture money, money that hurt the neighborhood, that came out of hurting neighborhoods, back into the community by paying lawyers to help clean up their records. So if you've got a case that's been dismissed, know somebody with open warrants, just anybody who needs a second chance, with Dwight Boykins' second chance employers and our lawyers working to clean up people's records, we think that a job is the best crime prevention. Now, what about you and your safety, seniors? Have you received a phone call telling you you're going to be arrested if you don't go run and pay somebody right now for your grand jury service that you didn't get to? Have you received a knock at the door by somebody telling you, "Your roof is messed up, and if you don't pay them right now, it's going to fall in"? There's so much fraud happening against seniors electronically, in person, on the phone. Don't fall for it. We've got an elder abuse section and a criminal fraud section that are ready to help you. These are the cases that we make every day. You report these crimes to the police, and we will investigate. Seniors, you are not the most vulnerable, but you are the most important part of our community. You carry the wisdom, we need to be there to protect you. Community safety is all about protecting our neighborhoods. It starts from within, Charles. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to our civic leaders about how you can make your city and county safer. We're here to help. Call the DA's office if you need us, we're available to you. Thank you, Charles.
Okay. Now, just listening at what Chief Bradford was saying about the dark side of bail reform, it appears to me that there is a dark side. And it seems like what you're saying about the dark side, that I'm going to put them And it seems like what you're saying about the dark side, that I'm going to put them two together. What you're saying is part of that dark side, that blanket bail reform is not working like it could work with checks and balances. So how would you redirect it if you were the commissioner? How would you fix it?
Well, as I stated earlier, you bring in the experts. You bring in the people that actually do the work, the criminal court judges, the DA, the law enforcement agencies, the defense attorneys, and the community. You bring all of us together. That's what I would do. I would bring all of us together so we can discuss how can we make our community safer? See, in the late 80s and early 90s, I used to rehabilitate, educate at-risk youth. The kids were under the no child left behind. In actuality, they were actually kicking out blacks and browns. And so they were calling them high school dropouts, but it should have really been called kickouts. So we took them in at our school, Jesse Jackson and Associates. And then we became, yes, Yep, Youth for Education and Success. And we were one of the first black charter schools. We had a school here in Houston and one in Fort Worth. And so we rehabilitated, and I personally placed them on jobs. We showed them love, so we kept them out of prison. And a lot of those young people, well, they're now closer to my age. But a lot of them are educators, pastors, coaches, doing very well. So one of the things that I also want to do as commissioner is invest in our youth programs that have been cut now under this
Wait a minute. What you mean, cut?
Oh, there are senior programs that have been cut and youth programs that have been cut. Now, you asked me, where has the money gone? I have no idea.
So 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 would you say that you, one of the things you would also do is something like an audit or forensic audit, as I've heard, to make sure you know where all monies are?
Yes. And that's another thing that I would do as county commissioner. I would be transparent with our tax dollars. See, I know, when you drive around southeast Houston, Northwood Manor, the northeast side, and certain Casimir Gardens, you drive around certain parts of the community, it's been neglected for years. Rodney Ellis, a state senator for 26 years, black schools closed under his watch. And so to fast
And at that point, I want to add that I do not recall any elected official, black or white, that sounded the alarm, asked for a task force, and put boots on the ground to fix any of that 10, 15 years ago.
You're exactly right. And that's another reason why I'm running. I just say it's just time out to keep putting the same people in office that have neglected our community. And they've become richer and richer while our community has been neglected.
And poorer.
Yes.
I quoted a book on Sunnyside done by a researcher from University of Houston about eight, seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago. And in her research, she identified $22 million leaves Sunnyside every year. And the conclusion was, and the method, is that there were no services, few services in the Sunnyside boundary. So people had to go outside food deserts, okay, those kind of, they had to go outside to spend their money so there's no circulation of money in the community. And that's by design. And you cannot remove that the politician in and of that area had to know and the neighborhoods that have been labeled as vulnerable, high risk, at risk, and with unmet needs from north to south are all in Precinct One.
Yes. It's interesting that you would say that. Precinct One deserves health care. You're right.
Oh, my goodness.
We have health and wellness. The Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services completed a survey of Harris Health System on September 27, 2019, and determined that the county's safety net health care was not in compliance in seven areas, including its governing body, patient rights, nursing services, laboratory services, infection control, surgical services, and rehabilitation services. This is unacceptable. And this is all in Precinct One.
All the health hospitals, LBJ?
Yes.
Bentab?
Bentab, yes. And the major health care facilities in Precinct One received, those are not in compliance.
It seems to me that those would be good campaign information to be part of your campaign reform for Precinct One.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We have, what, two weeks until early voting?
Right.
And early voting starts February 18th, and then the election is March 3rd. It's the presidential primary. And this is the real election.
When you say real, real election?
For this Harris County Commissioner, Precinct One.
Oh, yes. Okay, I'm with you.
For this one. This is, the presidential election, presidential primary is March 3rd.
Right.
And then you'll vote in November. But this is it. It's just the two of us in this race.
And so so we can continue as designed now or make a change for the better by selecting you? Let me ask this question. What would be some of the mechanics procedures? Your first day on the job, what would you, how would you, how do you foresee your first day on the job?
Well, right now, I've already put in place an environmental task force to help with the and and find out how we can help the people that have been infected with cancer and start not allowing these cancer-causing
Carcinogens.
Carcinogens, but I'm talking about like Union Pacific.
Oh, the private sector.
The private sector to come into our communities. The concrete batch plant that's located in Acres Homes. And causing asthma and health problems. Only the black and brown communities are affected by these private sectors that end up hurting our communities. So that's what I've already formed, a task force to work on the environmental issues. I have already formed a coalition with the law enforcement agencies and the DA. And we're already talking about public safety issues. And when I'm elected, I want to bring in, I'm already working and engaging in the community. My my campaign office is in Sunnyside, and I have another campaign office located on I-10 and Lathrop. And so I'm in the neighborhood because I care about the community. So I'm already building task force. And then there are a lot of seniors that have come to me, just sad, because the programs that they used to enjoy under my cousin, Commissioner Franco Lee, have been cut. And I want to reinstitute those programs that the seniors enjoyed. I know about, there are a lot of educational programs for our youth. And I want to invest into those existing programs and invest in the good ones. I want to invest in minority-owned businesses, women businesses, black businesses, community businesses in Precinct One. There's no reason why we shouldn't be proud of Harris County and especially Precinct One. We've been neglected. We don't have any grocery stores, as you stated. We don't have any good grocery stores. We just, we just got one now. But we need healthy food, too. We like public safety as well.
Right.
And so I want to change all of that. So day one would be very, very busy for me, but I'm already engaging the community and already building coalitions and task force to help with these programs that I want to implement.
Okay, so now, do you plan on, or do you foresee a face-off with you and the commissioner in a public debate?
I would be happy to do that.
Remember now, you heard it first, right here on Community Views and Solutions. We have one taker. Now we're waiting for the second taker. We'll tell you and get back with you on February the 20th to let you know if we got a taker for a face-off between incumbent and challenger. You heard it first. What would be, how would you work with other elected officials?
Well, that's a good question. I have been a business owner, a municipal bond attorney, and I worked on the financial bond transactions here and for both airports that are located in Precinct One.
Both airports are in Precinct One?
Yes. And as a judge, I have been able to work across party lines. When I was elected in 2008, there hadn't been a Democrat or a black, a black person, for that matter, elected in 20 years. And when I was first elected to the state district court, 339th, there was only one Harris County Drug Court for the felony courts for rehabilitation. So under my leadership and tenure, Harris County felony courts now have four, Harris County Drug Courts, a mental health court, a mental competency restoration court, a veterans court, and a reintegration court. All of those courts were created for rehabilitation because
Not incarceration.
Not incarceration. Because from the late 80s to early 90s, I took those skills to the bench. I know that not everyone belongs in prison, and there are a lot of people that deserve second chances. And they might have an addiction or a mental illness. So that's why those courts were created, to actually help keep people out of jail.
Now, is it true that the Harris County Jail is the largest mental health facility in the state?
Well, I would say that it was. And that was before, there were a lot of people being locked up for misdemeanor offenses. And now there's mental health courts, and there are mental health facilities. I believe there's one that the DA and Judge Ed Emmett helped create. So now we're trying to divert people. We also need to work on homelessness. We need to work on that. There's a lot of work to be done in Harris County. We need to be proud of Harris County and downtown, where a lot of homeless people are sleeping, that's Precinct One, too. Yes. And so there's a, it's not that Harris County is broke, it's that our tax dollars have been mismanaged and misappropriated. We don't know where our tax dollars have gone. We do know that the county commissioners court received $1.3 billion from the federal government and that the city of Houston received $1.3 billion to help Hurricane Harvey victims. The city of Houston fixed 15 homes. The county commissioners court fixed none.
I thought it was the other way around.
No, no. Now, I do understand that, and I believe it's because I'm running, that they are now starting to fix a few homes. So you might be one of the lucky ones. But I say that it's it's just time out to keep electing people who have neglected you for 36 years. It's time to elect someone that is a public servant and that hears you and understands your needs and will solve your problems.
Well, let me ask this question. Is the commissioners court or the commissioner? Any, does he or she have any mandate that says that they have to work with another elected official, maybe at the state level, federal level? Is it anything legally binding that would force the county commissioner to not work or work with another elected official?
Well, no, there's not a mandate to state that.
But the reason I say that is because how can you have such blight, such repeated neglect? Grocery stores, none in Acres Home, none in Casimir Garden, none in this, none in Sunnyside, none in, you have such a duplication of neglect. And then at all levels of elected officials, it's mum. So it looks to me like that's a conscious agreement.
It appears that it is a conscious agreement. And I believe that's why people are rising up to say that we're not going to take it anymore, that we know we deserve better. And when you know better, you do better. And why would you keep putting the same person in office? You have to look around and see and hold elected officials accountable. You have to see, has my life improved these 30 years that this person has been in office?
The county attorney, the district attorney talked about senior citizen scams. We had our tele town hall meeting, our first tele town hall meeting Tuesday night. And one lady got on the call and said that she had been scammed out of $25,000. Now, the reason I want to, when it's made me think, the reason I brought up the example about the $22 million leaving Sunnyside is that's supposed to be a poor neighborhood. But that kind of money leaves every year. So there's no reinvestment and recycle into the community. But it appears that there's that conscious effort to bring developers in and redevelop and displace.
Yes.
So how would you address the displacement that's going on through quote unquote new development?
Well, if you notice, this is how it starts with the gentrification. It starts with all of a sudden, your taxes are higher than you've ever seen before. That's how they push you out. And I'm already planning on a program called Buy the Block Back. And that's reinvesting in the community. That's what needs to happen. We have not had any elected officials to invest in us right now.
Does the county commissioner control any, any of the tax delinquent properties in his district or her district?
I'm pretty sure that, but see, the county commissioner controls the majority of the budget for the county.
The entire county?
Yes, there are four county commissioners. Yes, there are four county commissioners, Precinct One, Two, and Three and Four. And from what I looked at, I'd actually have to find the budget, but from what I glanced at, Precinct Two, Three, and Four commissioners invested in their community. Precinct One commissioner rolled it over so it could gain interest. What happens when they gains interest? They get to keep the interest.
Who?
The commissioner. They get to keep the interest.
Wait a minute, you mean, I, I.
And do other things and implement other programs.
Wait a minute, you know I'm slow. You know I'm slow. So, when you say that, I have to clarify and ask you. When you say keep the interest, in his general operating budget or his general operating pocket?
The general operating budget. They get to keep the interest and do what they want to do with it. Yes.
So, does the county commissioner and the county itself have any spending protocols? Or is it at the discretion of the commissioner?
The entire commissioners' court, including the county judge, they have a budget of $5 billion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Say that again, now.
They have a, they handle a budget of $5 billion.
Total?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, Precinct One has typically had a budget of $90 million. And so, that money could be invested into the community, but it hasn't. And so, what I look at is that, you know, this current commissioner brags on, well, we got bike trails, you know.
Bike trails.
Bike trails are not a real emergency when you've seen people steal this place from Hurricane Harvey.
Right.
A bike trail? I presided over a case, the little girl lived in Acres Homes. She and her mother and brother were walking home from school. And they were walking in the street because there were no sidewalks. I believe it was Acres Homes, and, because this was 2009. And they didn't have sidewalks, and a drunk driver ran over and killed her. Had she had a sidewalk, maybe her life would have been saved. So, to me, there are other major priorities that our communities need than a bike trail.
Wow, I mean, human life versus exercise?
Yes.
Wow. Well, we're getting close to our cutoff time. I, I thank you for your comment. Can you give us your closing argument, statement as to summarize what we've all talked about? And then, let us know, what is your impact statement that you want the community, the viewers to know?
Well, what I would say is that we deserve better in our community. And it's time to start electing not career politicians, but real public servants who care about the community and want to see us grow and be healthy. My six-point plan includes public safety, flood mitigation and infrastructure, business opportunities and prosperity, job training and education. You know, everybody's not going to go to a four-year college. But Harris County does have jobs. But now, they're looking for people to get trained. They're actually offering free training at some trade schools. The Port Commission, they have, I think it's called the Seafarers. They train you in Virginia, all expenses paid, and you travel on a ship, on cargo ships, and you make good money. So, I want to invest in those programs. I want us to have better health and wellness. We deserve hospitals, we deserve better health care. And I want to reinstitute the senior programs and invest in our seniors. Our seniors paved the way for us, and our youth, I want to invest in our youth. Our youth are our future. So, I say that we deserve better, and that's why I'm running. And my name's Maria T. Jackson. Maria T. Jackson, Maria T. Jackson, running for Harris County Commissioner, Precinct One.
Well.
One more thing.
Okay.
Because if you keep doing the same thing and keep electing the same people, nothing is going to change. 2020 is the year of change.
All right. This is Charles X. White with Community Views and Solutions, your host. We're signing off for now. We'll see you on the 20th of Feb, the 20th of February, maybe the 13th of February. But we'll see you. And we thank you for your viewing, and hopefully, we passed on and provided some information that's useful today. Thank you.